Good morning, everybody. We're going to call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting at 10:02. If we would, please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, at this time, we're going to open up the floor for public comment. If there's anybody here who would like to make any public comment, we will welcome them to the podium at this point. Is there anybody here for public comment? Okay, and we'd ask you, if you would be so kind, just to state your name and municipality you live in. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much. My name is Mel Curtis. I am the Anti-Hunger Director for the YMCA Center County, and I'm also the Branch Director for the Machan Valley YMCA. Here today to give you some positive news. One of the great things is we have filed our waiver to get our childcare back open across the county for essential workers. We're hoping to hear within 24 hours, but it's hard to tell when you're working with DHS, what we're, you know, the delays it's going to take. The other thing I'm here to talk to you about is the YMCA currently works with seven school districts. We work with every school district in Center County plus additional school districts. One of the things that we do is feed these children. We are now geared up that we will be out every day of the week feeding kids while they're out of school. We have a task force put together, which has grown phenomenally. We have volunteers coming from all over the county to serve kids every day. Because we can't do any type of congregant feeding, we are all doing stop-and-go locations. So we will bag food, take it to these sites. The ideal scenario is that it'll be drive-through. So they'll come in, they'll tell us the number of children, we'll hand the bags into their car, and they go off. Every meal going out each day will be what's classified as a lunch and also an evening snack. Some sites that are not reimbursable through the USDA, those sites, excuse me, will be offered every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and it'll be much like an extended backpack. So they will get the same amount of food that the other sites will be getting. Our biggest need right now, as I'm sure everyone does at this point, transportation, additional volunteers, and also the financial support of the communities. Center County, as a whole, the citizens of Center County have been phenomenal. I can't express how everyone has really opened up to help out in any way, shape, or form. It was great. I walked into the building today, and one of your employees handed me a check donation. It was like, it's a great way to be greeted. So if there's anything that the county can do through us, through transportation or anything like that, we'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Curtis. We appreciate it. Did you have any question? Mel, Mr. Curtis, would you be willing to take any questions?
Now, what food resource, I know you do backpacks during summer when classes, what kind of food resources do you have on hand, or are you looking for food donations yourselves?
Currently, we do have a certain amount of food. We are looking for food donations. We have listed out on our Facebook pages of the items that we do need. We are sending a tractor and trailer to Harrisburg on Friday. Eagle Towing has donated their services to go pick up food for us. We are also getting food through commodities programs, through the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture.
You mentioned you walked in, somebody gave you a check, and this time I get...
Or cash can go along my food. Oh, yeah, definitely, because what happens is every day is going to be completely different. I mean, you know, like, the schools have come forward and have given us their excess milk, meats and cheese and stuff like that. At a point, that stuff is not going to be able to be used. So, I mean, there's a lot of times where we're going to need items, and we're going to need to pick them up immediately. So gift cards, cash, check, whatever.
Is the traveling table on the road?
Traveling table is packed, and it's ready to roll. It will probably be out late this afternoon. And we have four other vehicles that are being packed. We're going to start packing all the stuff today. We will be on the road tomorrow feeding children.
And remote sites, more information at your...
Yes, we're going to post everything tonight, all the sites that we're going to be at. I will tell you, the first three sites that are going to open will be the Belfont YMCA, the Machan Valley YMCA, and the State College YMCA. We will be feeding kids there from 12 to 1 starting tomorrow.
This is Clearfield Lake Center County.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mel?
Thank you very much.
So just to reiterate, the need that Mr. Curtis and the Y and so many other groups have within our community is important right now, so we want to help them out. And we thank Mel for taking the time to be here today and share some of the work that they're doing. Anyone else here for public comment? Okay, seeing no one, we're going to go into our, consider the approval of our minutes for our Tuesday, March 10th meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes from Tuesday, March 10th.
I will second that.
Okay, and moved and seconded. Any final discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, motion is carried. So, in light of trying to reduce the amount of individuals at our meetings, we were unfortunately needing to, and they as well, cancel, this would be the Center County 4H program, which is a lot of great work in our community for agriculture. We do have a proclamation that we're going to be mailing to them, but the Penn State Extension, a 4H youth development program, really does a lot of educational programs for our community. And so we have the proclamation as this week, as Pennsylvania 4H week here in Center County. And so we're going to send that to them again and wish them all the best in the future. So would there be a motion to approve that?
A motion to adopt proclamation number two of 2020, and I do certainly miss the 4H youth.
I will second that.
Okay, so moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, motion is carried. Okay. All right, and we'll turn it over to Margaret for some introductions.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure this morning to introduce to you all Mr. Anthony Grace. Anthony is a part of the Weber-Murphy Fox team and overseeing our courthouse renovations and serving as a project manager. So he is here today to give us an update of where we are in the process. So turn it over.
Thank you very much for letting me be here today, and good morning, all. I have some good news, okay? Not nearly to the extent of Mr. Curtis' good news. This is just construction news, okay? But anyway, the courthouse project is progressing very well. We're over 50% complete. In this past week, we've crossed over the hurdle of getting our rough-in inspections for the general construction, for the walls, rough-in, electrical and plumbing rough-ins. All those are done. Center Region Code has signed off on them, so now we're able to start closing in the walls. The GC is hanging drywall right now. We're allowed, we're permitted, according to the code, to hang drywall on one side of the new walls, okay? So the GC is hanging on, like, the finished sides of the restrooms, of the restroom areas. That way, we can move forward with finishing and starting ceramic tile work to keep the project moving. And the sprinkler shop drawings have been submitted. The set has been submitted to Center Region Code for their review, as well as to our consulting engineer for their review. I spoke with the consulting engineer on my way in, and they're basically approved. It's just, we just have to get them stamped and backed. So that's moving along nicely. So it's pretty good. The vestibule CMU walls, I guess, geez, I have control. Do I? Or maybe not?
It decides.
It decides, okay. I'm not sure what to...
Right there.
We had photos, anyway.
Maybe she can...
Okay, well, anyway, I'll keep talking. And, oh, there we go. Okay, so that's the new vestibule, okay? As you see, the CMU walls are 98% complete. We started, they started erecting the structural steel, you know, for the roof framing and the lentils for the entrance ways. The brick veneer is started. You can see down at the lower, down at the lower front, you can see the brick veneer starting to go up, and they're running that around all three sides.
Over here?
But as, just at the bottom, a little bit, just below that wall. Okay, see that? That's the new brick. So the brick is a really close match to the existing courthouse. We were really fortunate to be able to find the bricks. It's really going to look like it belongs there. It's not going to look like an afterthought. On the interior, the... geez, I can't. Oh, there it is. Okay, so there's, as I mentioned, the drywall walls are going up. They have the drywall hung on the second floor for this, this is the, I believe this is going to be the break room, okay, with the, with, no, no, it's, this is a restroom area, because I see all the, all the different, I'm sorry. But anyway, the drywall walls are up, the cement board backer is up for the ceramic tile. That's all proceeding very nicely. As I mentioned, the plumbing, electrical, rough-in is complete and inspected. The installation of the gypsum wallboard is going on, as well as the insulation, the all-important sound insulation, okay? And that's just, that's just one area that I wanted to show as an example. And I mentioned the sprinkler shop drawings are approved and ongoing. And at this point, all the submittals and our, all the submittals are complete, so there's nothing else holding up the, anything that would hold up the contractors. And at this moment in time, I'm pretty proud of, there's, there are no open RFIs. So the project is moving forward. So we've had very good weather. I mean, we've had an excellent winter as far as construction goes, you know, so, I mean, it's, it's moving along. Right now, we are within budget, and as it looks right now, we are within timeframe for completion, mid-May. Okay, so, any questions?
No.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Operating for you.
And, and, any questions?
We wanted to do basically a status check, and you did that, Tony. We appreciate it. So proceed, and thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thanks very much for the opportunity to be here. We appreciate it.
Is it included sprinklers?
Yes, sir. Yes. Yes, sir, it does. And the... The sprinkler, I spoke with the sprinkler subcontractor late yesterday afternoon. The piping has already been released, and it's being fabbed right now. So it's moving forward. Okay?
Thank you very much, Tony.
Thanks for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming over.
Prior to us going into our update from Margaret Gray, as it relates to COVID-19, also known as the coronavirus, we as a board just wanted to reassure the public of the steps that we're taking to keep you and the, our county employees safe. One of the things that we're, and Margaret's going to detail further, is taking very seriously the four principles as we are entering into this epidemic of self-monitoring, social distancing, quarantining, and isolating. And we're demonstrating that here in our board meeting today. It's just one small instance of how we can all stay safe and healthy, keeping that six-foot distance between each other. And as we start to flatten the curve and make sure that we're getting the health care that's needed to our most vulnerable residents that come down with this disease, we'll be able to, again, stay healthy and get through this. One of the key challenges that we have is we still need to conduct the business of the county. And so we're still going to be continuing to have our meetings, but as Margaret's going to detail in specifics, we'll have opportunities to be able to conference in if we need to. In addition, we also want to welcome public comments, but we want to be sensitive to President Trump's recommendation that we have 10 people at most in settings. And so we're going to be deploying a lot of social media opportunities for people to add public comment. We always have CNET, that's going to be broadcasting all of our meetings live. We also have email and phone, where people can write in and call in with their thoughts. One of the great things about Pennsylvania is we have 66 other counties throughout the state who are dealing with this challenge as well. And we really want to keep in mind our sister counties in the southeast that are the epicenter of this pandemic. But we're monitoring and collaborating with them in real time. And so we're sharing best practices. We have a common mission of providing the continuity of services to our citizens and their citizens, so it's very much a collaboration. As Mr. Curtis from the Y detailed a little bit ago, there are many, many needs in this community. And we're so fortunate that we have the social media connections where people can reach out, talk about needs, whether it's childcare, food insecurity, whatever it may be. So we want to rest assured, this is not the time for panic. It's the time for preparation. And we're doing those steps to make sure then the days ahead, we can come out of this as a stronger community. So with that, we're going to turn it over to Margaret. She has been leading up our COVID-19 planning committee and doing a great job with it. And we're going to be detailing some of the things that she's been working on and some actions that we need to take.
Thank you very much. As Commissioner Pipe said, we've been navigating our way through what is an extremely challenging and rapidly changing COVID-19 situation. And my update this morning focuses on measures that we are implementing with regard to county services and employees. Many of these directives follow the governor's guidance, the most recent, of course, we heard yesterday afternoon. So first, in accordance with the governor's direction, all of our senior centers are closed effective today. We have suspended RSVP activities across the county. County transportation continues to operate with trips restricted to what we're calling life-sustaining activities. That would mean trips to the grocery store, doctor's appointments, and trips to pharmacies. Travel outside of the county by our employees is suspended unless absolutely mission-critical. Our county meeting rooms are closed to outside groups until further notice. We're asking that all county-related authorities, boards, and commissions postpone meetings unless there is absolutely essential business that needs to be conducted. And in those cases, we're recommending teleconferencing and videoconferencing to meet those objectives. We have closed access to the ground floor of the Willough Bank Building, that is the floor beneath this one, where our 911 center and emergency management offices are maintained. Only authorized staff may access that floor. County meetings of more than 12 to 15 people should move to virtual platforms. If a meeting under 12 is required, such as this one, social distancing is to be practiced. While our buildings are not closed at this time, we are limiting public access to the offices in the Willough Bank and Summit Park buildings on an office-by-office basis. So, as you know, we have many different services that are represented in this building and in the Summit Park building. And so each of the department heads is working through what that looks like in terms of providing necessary services to the public. We're asking the public to call first to determine if the business that they need to conduct may be done by telephone. So that's a really important takeaway, that people planning to make a trip out should call first. And finally, and as soon as possible, our non-court-related offices, and I'm saying non-court-related offices, should be arranging for as many of our employees to work as home, at home as possible. Today, the board will be considering a COVID-19 leave policy that will assist employees should they become ill or need to be in a quarantine situation. Our goal is quite simple, and that is to reduce the number of people, and that is the visiting public and employees in our buildings, while maintaining a continuity of essential county services. Our webpage is up with current updates. As we've been suggesting the past several weeks, we're urging folks to follow the CDC and Department of Health sites for additional personal guidance. And to the public, if you are in doubt about a county service, please call first. So that is my update for today. And I know that we have some other items on the agenda here that follow on this, so we could start to go down through those. So the first action item here is a, to our public meeting rules. Our public meeting rules, of course, were adopted at the beginning of this session, January 6, 2020. And item number four is the amendment and addition, which states, "Board members who need to be absent from the meeting due to illness, quarantine, or other reasons can participate in the meetings by phone, provided that notice is given to other board members and staff, preferably 24-hour notice. So sufficient electronic related equipment needs can be provided in the meeting room for such participation. All participants by phone must identify themselves and their location, and must be able to be heard in the meeting room and also hear all comments in the meeting room in order for the board member to be considered in attendance for current purposes." This is important because, under the Sunshine Law, we have responsibilities to make sure that we are keeping our, the actions of our different needing groups open to the public will allow, if anyone needs to be out, that acts.
In many ways, when we look at this, other counties are already doing this, but this just, again, codifies it and allows us to make sure that we can point to this if that was the instance. We would hope that we never need to use it, but in the case that any one of us would need to be isolated or quarantined, it gives us the opportunity to still have individuals weigh in. So any further discussion, comments, thoughts on this?
Okay.
Would there be a motion?
Motion to adopt the amendment, sorry, sorry, motion to adopt the amended public meeting rules.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, motion is carried.
Okay, the next item is an employee leave directed, a COVID-19 leave directed. You have copies in front of you. The purpose of the directive is to define the use of leave by employees during these circumstances. It specifically addresses leave, authorized leave time for an individual who may be ill due to the COVID-19 virus, or who may need to be in quarantine voluntary or otherwise as a result of exposure to the COVID-19 virus. It does provide for additional paid leave time that the Board of Commissioners would offer to these employees who find themselves, should they find themselves in these types of circumstances. We're working with our Director of HR to... We're working with our Director of H R to put certain codes in place, and we'll be getting more information out to our employees this afternoon.
And that, I would presume that this program will have to be authorized by our Human Resources Department on a case-by-case basis?
Yes. And in this leave directive, there's direction to employees about how they must report to the Department of Human Resources and their department head, what kind of documentation they need to provide, what type of doctor's notifications, slips they need to provide. So it is spelled out in the document.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on this? Hearing none. Move for a motion.
Motion to approve the COVID-19 employee leave directive.
I will second it. It's been moved and seconded. Any final questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion is carried.
The third item is to ask for consideration of authorizing an amount of money to be used in an emergency situation quickly, should additional COVID-19 expenses be necessary. So it would identify money that we have within our contingency fund and provide us with the ability, if we needed, to purchase supplies or whatever in a very quick manner.
Just a step that allows, again, it piggybacks on our emergency declaration, allows us just to get funds out needed as quickly as possible. But it's mostly for disinfecting and keeping employees safe, so we want to make sure that's there. Any questions before we look for a motion?
Should we replenish that as needed?
Sure.
Your authorization, yes?
Yes, absolutely, yes. All right, is there a motion?
Motion to authorize Administrator Margaret Gray to expend funds.
I will make that a second.
And it would be the amount of $10,000?
Okay, not to exceed $10,000.
All right. Any questions, comments on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion is carried. Okay. All right, and as we go into, one of the things we're going to be demonstrating through our meetings for the next several weeks is going to be, we may not see as many department heads and elected officials here, and we're going to have Margaret reporting the work that's been done in coordination with her and them. So we're going to hand it over to Margaret for the rest of the agenda, so, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure.
The first item is a grant application, looking for your approval to submit a grant to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the Burn Justice Assistance Grant Funds. This grant would be, our application would actually be divided into two parts. The first would propose to implement a program called Decision Points, a curriculum at the Center County Correctional Facility, which is a cognitive behavioral intervention program for mental health. And the second part would be for the award, would be the creation of a new position at the Center County Correctional Facility for a mental health specialist. This grant application needs to be submitted by the end of the month, and the amount of the grant application is a range based on where this lands. It will be between $85,000 and $150,000. But this is the application phase.
Several weeks ago, we had a meeting with some of our C J A B members to talk about the strategic plan and some of the things we were going to work on, and this is really an opportunity to help us do that. The money's available, and so it makes sense to make the application. Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion, comments on this? Okay. All right, we look for a motion.
Motion to add the grant application to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency to the March 19 consent agenda.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion is carried.
The next grant item is related to the Grange Park Equine Center Project. This is an assignment agreement with Northwest Bank and paid to allow reimbursement of funds from the Pennsylvania Office of Budget Redevelopment Capital Assistance Program for construction of this Grange Park Equine Center Project. This actually, your action today is acknowledging the assignment agreement because you are not a party to the actual transaction. We are serving in the capacity of a pass-through for purposes of receiving and administering these RACP funds, and as you know, this was in an amount not to exceed $1.2 million for the construction of the outside equine arena roof. The Center County, as you know, is not a party to this agreement, but your action today acknowledges that they, as grantee, will act in accordance with the assignment agreement as specified here.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to acknowledge the assignment agreement for the Grange Park Equine Center Project.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion is carried. Okay. And into our contracts section.
Contracts. The first is an intergovernmental agreement with Franklin County. It's an intergovernmental housing agreement, a contract rate of $65 per day, so that Franklin County may send inmates to the Center County Correctional Facility, and this is the reimbursement rate. This is similar and exactly the same agreement we have with many other counties across the state.
Any questions for Margaret? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to add the intergovernmental agreement with Franklin County to the March 19 consent agenda.
Seconded.
It's been seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
The next two items related to court administration are both reimbursement applications. The first is a reimbursement application under the Pennsylvania Rule of Judicial Administration 701 and Act 37 of 2007, Senior Judge Chambers and Support Staff. So it is an application for Senior Judge reimbursable costs, application to the Administrative Office of the Pennsylvania Courts for reimbursable costs incurred in calendar year 2019. Reimbursements requested are for staff support in the amount of $8,108, and facilities for $630, for a total of $8,738. Again, this is for expenditures incurred in 2019. Second is Court Interpreter Services Grant Application, also to the A O P C, for language-access reimbursable costs incurred in calendar year 2019. Reimbursements requested are for courtroom interpreters in the amount of $48,514.23, and telephone interpreting services in the amount of $1,316.25, for a total of $49,830.48. And again, all of these expenditures were incurred in 2019.
Thank you, Margaret. Any questions on this? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to add submission of the reimbursement applications to the March 19 consent agenda.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right. Moving on to I T.
The next contract relates to our information technology services. This is a contract renewal with Ignite to renew licensing for secure cloud file sharing and storage. Contract total is $23,760, as for the period of March 28, 2020, through March 27 of 2021. And we'd be asking to add this to next week's consent agenda.
Is there a motion? Motion to add the contract renewal with Ignite to the March 19 consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion is carried. Okay. Moving on to our consent agenda, is there any items that we needed to pull out for putting on the 19th consent agenda?
Yes. I'd like your consideration of pulling out item letter A until our Thursday board commissioners meeting provides an additional consultation.
Solicitor review, okay. All right. Would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda other than item A?
Motion to approve items B, C, and D on today's consent agenda, and to pull item A for solicitor review. Is that what you would want?
All right, so we move then seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion is carried. Okay. Commissioner Higgins, our check.
All right. We have about an average check run today of $1,333,754.05. The check of the week is to elections, systems, and software for $47,987.50 to help support the upcoming primary election. And so I would like to make a motion to approve the check run dated March 13.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on the check run? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay, and Commissioner Dershowitz.
All right, we have a voter registration report today that includes 109,292 registered voters. That's up 17 from our last report. We have 46,338 Democratic registrants, 153 Green Party, 670 Libertarian, 14,568 No Affiliation, and 42,841 Republican. Again, that's, that's, leaves a sum total of all other voters at 4,722. The feature party this week of the other parties is the blank party. And the blank party has three registrants here in Center County, so we'd like to recognize the blank party today. Okay, and then moving forward to our precinct recognition, we have precinct number 67 as our feature this morning. That's Patton South 2, that votes at Oakwood Presbyterian Church. In the last election, there were a total of 2,399 registered voters. There were 369 ballots cast, and voter turnout in the fall was 15.38%. The folks that make it happen in precinct number 67, we have Chris Flavin as the judge of elections, we have Deb Flavin as minority inspector, Tracy Masaglia as majority inspector, and the clerks include Ann Lang, Andrea Rieger, Cole Hauser, Zo Goff, Carolyn Tothero, and I believe that might be it. Yep, that's the crew. We want to thank the Oakwood Presbyterian Church for allowing us to use their facility. And hopefully, we'll be seeing you very soon again, and we can work through all the challenges of our election process in these uncertain times.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Any executive sessions we need to report, Margaret?
Yes. The Board of Commissioners met an executive session on Saturday, March 14, from 1:45 to 1:52 PM, related to issuance of the Declaration of Disaster Emergency.
And we do want to remember that next Tuesday, we were going to have our C cap conference, but that has been canceled, and so we will still be canceling our commissioners' meeting. But we will be back on the 31st for our next Tuesday meeting. We have the balance of our schedule there for other meetings. Any questions, Gary or Chris, before we...
Sure. Supreme Court yesterday put out a order, recommendations for county courts. Will there be a separate order coming from the county judge here? Do we know?
We'd want to have them speak to that in terms of if they will be releasing anything, so we don't want to get ahead of what their plans are doing. We've been in constant communication with them. There are different, again, as Margaret alluded to, there are certain services that we can begin to wind down. The courts are a different story. President Judge Drew West is really the decision-maker there, so we want to respect that, recognize it. But anything we do would have implications, so we're in constant contact with them.
I think a question I asked you last week, and I can't operate a cell phone. With all the folks at Penn State online, is there any type of impact on broadband services, emergency providers, anything in terms of county-wide?
Penn State's going to Zoom service. I have a family member who's currently doing that for their work, and that is in the cloud. And so for certain services, that would be doing an onsite or working on a server-based method, there is some ramp-up time that's needed. But in terms of, we have not heard of any additional issues that they're having from an I T perspective.
There's been rumors every day about the hospital list or whatever. Are you satisfied with communications network between the state, you, various medical agencies, whatever, in terms of, do you feel you're getting the latest updates, I guess?
We've been getting heads up prior to any major announcement that would affect us. We were alerted prior to the 2 P M. announcement of the statewide recommendations and closures. So we were given a heads up on that, and we're assured that we'll be made aware of any presumptive positives that would occur in Center County prior to being made public, so we can make any alerts to our staff and stakeholders. So as of right now, yes. And it's hour by hour at this point, so, but we are pleased with that communication.
That off a possible rumor, when you talk about people working, employees working from home, you're not talking about layoffs, you're just talking about remote access, right, in terms of county employees?
That's absolutely correct. Yes.
All right. Anything else to come before the board? We look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, June 38.
All in favor, say aye. We're adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.